...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, we have all regular members here: Julie Eaton, Bill Rice, Don Colantillo, Joe Campolito, and Holly Bem. So, we don't need to seat anyone tonight, but we have Diane Duran, and Marcus Furs, and Craig McCormick. Wow, I don't think we've had this many people up here. I know, I know. So, it's nice to see everybody here. All right. So, first order of business is new business, which is the referral from the zoning commission, the application ZC 23-11. George, do you have anything you want to?
So, this is an applicant-driven zoning text amendment, so it's a petition from a private applicant. He is, he is Steven. This, I think we said to everything at the applicant's booth, so it was a text amendment that would add an additional use to the I-1 zoning district, and that use is a special event use, so long as that is considered accessory to a primary use on the site. Primarily, we would admit that this is an effort to solve a problem that we have in tariff bill, but, to be clear, the special event, if added, would be permitted at any I-1 zoning district in any location. I'm happy to answer any questions. There are certainly things that, when we add a use like this, is certainly consistent with your economic development policies in the POCD. If you have a property in tariff bill that has posted special events for some period of time, although we find in the zoning ordinance that, the zoning regulations, that that use is simply not permitted. This is the way to make it right and fix for sure. Good use in that location. It's a good use in potentially other industrial locations where there is reuse or an ability to use property in a different. Again, the applicant is here specifically to help. Again, we wouldn't apply it to just one place. We'd apply it to all I-1 zoning.
So, can I ask a question? So, the planning staff didn't see any issue with other I-zoning, do you know, like, that might raise a red flag, you know, if it has to be? Do you know what I mean? Like, where?
So, we included some conditions that, I mean, we proposed it as a site plan application. And I think that where there wasn't an apartment, where it generated potential challenges to the community, I think we have the ability to go back and then either, or the zoning commission to not approve.
I'd like to hear, I mean, just to get your perspective, if you don't mind.
Not at all.
Okay, awesome.
TJ, Don, you do one. I've been telling you language only for quite some time. The company to this will definitely provide the provider, the people engaging with Jeff was not the provider, present company, and Steven Stang, who owns the Two Tunkses property, which is a historic property and has beautiful grounds abutting in the river where the glacier cut it out years ago, 10,000 people. So, he has a restaurant there. They've had events there. It's typically special events, like a wedding or that type of an event. And so, we went to town, and the staff was very helpful, and we looked at it. We don't think that there's an abundance of I-1 properties that this would apply to. But, I go back to the day where the heart room was on I-1 piece, and we used to have the Taco Mountain Festival there, but that's not what this is. This is for them to be able, with an administrative permit from town staff, to have a facility, to have special events there without having to come to the board on a repeat basis, or like, sometimes a packed board had used after. That's what they do. There's a lot of controls over it, because typically it's a tent. The building department has regulations with respect to tents. The police and everybody have parking oversight, as does the administrative approval. An administrative approval wouldn't be forthcoming from them if we had an event that overburdened the site. So, that's what it's for, and we do think it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development. We do think it's a good use of the property. And in the, the text of the language has controls over time, music, loudness, parking, and everything else. So, we think it's, we'll be very pleased if you can give it a favorable report through the city committee.
So, currently, if they wanted to do something special, they have to get a permit every time they, they want to do something?
They do, and maybe, and there is a problem, because through an emergency, I-1 zone was not specified as something that's done. The other thing I would point out is what we, what we followed under with town staff guiding us was the agricultural special event properties. So, this would be treated, just almost exactly similar to that, as an administrative approval on limited dates to do what you do. And so, that's a similar circumstance like this that exists in town, very favorable most of the times.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question, and maybe George. I haven't memorized the zoning map yet. So, what other properties might be affected?
Well, I don't have the zoning map in front of me. So, there's a couple parcels in tariff field that are I-1. You have several parcels in the North Village section that are currently, they're kind of north of the, of the big Y, zoned I-1 today, although there's probably a higher and better use for the I-1. I suspect somebody will want to work on a more residential, commercial zoning up there at some point. Obviously, on some pieces of events in Bitford that are I-1. There are some pieces further down south, purely, for instance, is zoned I-1. So, a handful, not, not a lot, not one. Again, this is designed for uses that are particularly more temporary, so it's tents and weddings. Again, if it was a permanent facility, a wedding banquet facility, that would require a whole different process, you know, in your inordinate.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, is it, TJ, are we talking about private events, like weddings, or are there, would there be public concerts and commercial?
Well, we would always have a private sponsor to be there, although it could be the government, but it would always have a sponsor to go in to get the administrative permit to have. So, at Two Tunkses, it's going to be probably present company or a family that's hired present company to cater a wedding, and that it would have that out in the 10 yard.
What was the impetus to apply for the, the text amendment?
The impetus was that they had some dates planned where people were trying to schedule a wedding, and they came down to City Hall, and part of the staff said, you know, "That's a problem in an I-1 zone." And then we looked at it, and we said, "That is, that's a problem in I-1 zone." That's, that's what this does.
Okay.
But, we're very happy with this zone, but we almost could make a grandfather claim, although there's, as George pointed out, they're not continuous events, they're single events.
Well, I read the conditions, and I noticed that there's no condition on the time of year, nor on the quantity of events that could be held. I think that was something that we talked about with the agricultural zone.
Yeah, with respect to the time of year, you know, we got three good seasons that you could have a wedding up there, but you have one season that you wouldn't. So, the weather is, these are typically outside events with tents, so it's a...
Yeah, but it doesn't preclude something else, right? Somebody could get creative. I don't know if that's a bad thing, you know? Maybe someone wants to have some type of winter festival, ice sculpture carving or something.
Good point. And every time we go, we got to demonstrate the parking and the, the facility can be supported.
Administrative approval.
Yep.
That's what I was thinking when I asked my question, is there, is there any likelihood that it could be used as an entertainment venue? Paid concerts, for instance? Or would that require special permitting?
That is not contemplated in this, in this draft. Special events. That's a good question.
But it's a special event. There's no restrictions on it.
So, that, no, it wasn't contemplated, but I'm not sure there's protection in there.
But there is a noise provision in it, and, but that's not what we...
I think there's a, I think there's hours, there's an hour's operation.
Right. So, I mean, if the noise does say seven, that is true, there's a noise.
If an application was submitted, let's say the text amendment had been adopted, and someone said, "I'd like to have a, a special event for 365 days this year," what would town's reaction?
So, we would call that, we would, the zoning officer or the planning director would say that that does not meet the spirit of that section, that it's a permanent use, it is not accessory to anything, and let's not commit.
How about 180 days? I, you know, I can foresee...
We'd have to review it.
A temporary structure being put up, and then all of a sudden, you know, it's being used almost every day.
Well, then it's not accessory.
That's what I was going to say.
Then it's not accessory. We would have to make a call.
Okay. It's left up to the administrative evaluation. I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
All right, then I'm going to make a motion that, that the Simsbury Planning Commission return a positive referral for the text amendment as described in, what's this application number? Application 23-11.
I'll second. Any further discussion?
Finding in, in, you know, in accordance with the plan of conservation and development.
I'm sorry to interrupt. You have a project commissioner, second information?
Julie.
Okay, that's my fault. Sorry. Thank you very much.
So, no further discussion? All those in favor of approving or sending a positive referral to the zoning commission on application 23-11, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, Reuben.
Oh, good evening.
Thanks for your work on the plan of conservation and development, too. It's significant, it's worth a lot.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right.
You have in front of you the draft...
I love this.
...plan of conservation and development. Glenn is going to introduce, I, I think the intention tonight is to kind of just give you an overview. They're not going to ask you to get into text and chapters, since you haven't had a chance to, to review it yet. We will, we'll, we'll take some additional steps, so we'll post this online, we'll post the draft in public, and think about it in a press release, whatever, whatever steps we'll take to get it out there and about. As you begin your work on it, and Glenn, what Glenn is going to do right now is describe it to you, and then talk a little bit about how do we get, you know, from here to a, to a completed document.
Okay.
Great.
Excellent.
Always, shall we go?
Yeah, okay, because I can, then I can...
This is always an exciting moment to share for the draft of the POCD with the commission. This is a fun project to work on. It ended up being more work than we anticipated, which is why we're here tonight. Normally, we would have liked to give you the document two weeks in advance, so that you would now have a chance to have, become familiar with it, so I realize tonight it's a little bit cold, if you will. The POCD, we have kept the chapter configuration the same. We followed the guidance that was in the scope of work, in terms of which chapter it would be minimal, modest, and then major work. Turned out that every chapter ended up needing modest, and we started getting into it because so much has changed, remember, the last five years of the POCD? And then that was to try to make it simple for the commission to use revisions marking. So, new text shows up in red, because that edition would have gone completely, deleted text just disappeared. So, if you would read it through, saying, "Okay, this could be what the POCD said," and if you really want to go back, you certainly can, because the baby, the sections are basically laid out pretty much the same way. As we move on, the revisions will, the revisions markings will disappear in the next edition, and you will then be able to focus in on the changes that we are making with it as part of our work concessions on the POCD. In addition to the materials in the plan itself, I've given you tonight, the document in terms of levels of plan review on one side and plan verbatim. And I think this is important for a couple of things. I think in a plan, it's the strength of the verbs, which makes all the difference in the world. So, if we can get to directive and assertive verbs, must, shall, will, that can really be a very focused and directed plan. On the other hand, every board and commission at town has pretty much independent statutory authority, or authority they were created from, board selectmen to do their job. So, when we tell them they must, shall, or will, we don't always get this kind of reception as we might like, because even though we're good intentioned, it doesn't come across well. And so, we may find that a softer verb is actually going to capture the essence of what we want. So, I didn't want you to get hung up on a strategy or recommendation in the plan because the verb wasn't quite right. So, think it through, and if you scribble and make a change, I think it will help if you maybe go by. We did try to focus this plan towards implementation, so we made a very difficult call. Went through the 2017 plan, discovered that there were 211 goals, 33 strategies, 261 policies, and E action steps. We said, "That is not a user-friendly document for focus on implementation." As a result, you get to the end of the chapters, you will see that the conditions of the plan have been distilled down to what we think are really the core issues for us going forward, the focus on implementation. So, we tried to use active verbs and be quite direct. We have broken up the strategies and recommendations. Let me just point you to a page number, so you just get a sense of what I'm talking about. The first one, go to page 34.
I know, but I see.
Page 34, yeah. So, this is the first policy section of the plan. We've done all the pages up to this, at the introduction, kind of setting the stage for this, this is financial resources chapter. And essentially, what we've done here is broken up our recommendations into two categories. The top one, the blue box, is what we're calling policies. Policies are things that you might use when you're reviewing an application, like you heard here tonight, or a referral, and say, "We would like to accomplish the following." So, these are guidelines. And what I've found over the years is the guidelines and policies don't really change over time. You know, "E well is a good policy for you." And so, you would use this when reviewing things. So, when somebody says, "Well, how did you do on implementing the plan?" The policy is not something you can really take off and say, "That was implemented." But down at the bottom of the page, in the red box, are what we call action steps. Action steps are, "Okay, we need to do this. We need to change a regulation, we need to start a program or policy, and we need to do specific things." So, if we were to look back in five years from now, and say, "You know what? Of the 44 action steps in this document," we, actually, it just ended up, the number of policies and action steps got roughly cut in half, because we were trying to be focused. You could say, "You know what? 44 action steps in the plan that we've accomplished, 22 of them." And to me, that, that is demonstrating significant success. For each of these policies and action steps, we've identified leaders and partners. So, this again is hopefully leading us to implementation. We can't guarantee to you this, and we got them all right. We think these are the entities most involved, but I imagine some boards will show up and say, "I don't want any piece of this. I don't want to be responsible for this." And others may show up and say, "Oh, put me in," because they'd like to do it. So, I think this is part of the dialogue and discussion of a plan, and to go a bit more forward, because by giving responsibility now, we're helping people learn, you open intent to kind of implement the document going forward. I've also provided for your information in reminders, an overview of the concept of implementation, and how we might get there. Because my thought process is, is to start off as a group, working through the documents ourselves, to get the words correct. And then, we might have a public informational meeting, we might go see other boards and commissions to just give them an overview of what we're doing, and then sometimes, towards the summer, for past, we might undertake a prioritization exercise. And I've explained here how this could work. I've done this several times before, shown you examples from another community that chose to do that. But by giving the priority points to different strategies, we can prioritize the top ones that we think planning needs to do, zoning needs to do, board selection might need to do, these types of strategies. So, I think our goal tonight is to...
That packet, it should be on your, it's in your front end section.
Yeah.
It's a schedule book, and then that one gets to the second, and then the discussion goes with it.
So, I think the only last thing I wanted to say, actually, in the plan itself, we made a couple of changes to the plan. We changed the strategy on residential development in the last plan to a strategy on housing business. We incorporated survey results, both from the public meeting we had, and the online survey throughout the document. In certain cases, we also left the results in from the prior survey, because that also strengthened the results, and showed that we stand, we self-track them, et cetera, over time. We have included in the beginning of the plan, the concept of what we call overarching principles. Those three overarching principles were, first of all, the concept of livability. You may recall, we had this discussion of character. Character is not the word as we wanted, but the area that we focused in on was livability, ambiance, and sense of place. And those are things which have resonated in the center for some time. But AARP has done research work on the concept of livability, and what that means. And it hits so many buttons in Simsbury that they embraced this word for it. And so, we co-opted it, and it's an overarching principle of the plan, enhance the livability of our community. We've also incorporated diversity, inclusion, equity as an overarching principle of the plan. And at several places throughout the plan, we've used logos in the sidebar to say, "This strategy is related to sustainability for diversity, equity, and inclusion." And the third overarching principle was the concept of sustainability. So, there are times we have an icon on the sidebar that refers to that, and there's some places, but all three are just on the same page, because we are talking about them. So, that's, I think, an overview of a plan document. I'm excited to share this with you, because I think it's a big step forward in my view, making this plan an implementable, meaningful document in the course of Simsbury system, and we get a chance to purchase it. I think the only other thing I wanted to do was to kind of talk about the schedule just a little bit. On the inside front pocket is a schedule, it's kind of like, all collected. When we started this process, we were looking for adoption date September, October this year, for us to do that and stay on track. Probably over the month of May, maybe just scheduled more than one week, to go through what is roughly 140 pages. Now, if you're familiar with the current plan, so it's not like we're starting from scratch, but there are some key things that have happened. And so, as a result, I want to make sure that I'm capturing the words and the essence of the community. So, I apologize if we weren't able to get this to you earlier. You think the key elements, the mapping and the other stuff, and great feedback from the board, and the earlier stuff, to bring us to where we are today. But it's just a schedule for us kind of moving forward based on what works for you. Because I think if we could be done by early end of May, early June, we could have a public meeting to share with the community by the end of June, before the Fourth of July. July and August are not great times. And we can take advantage of July and August, because there's a 65-day statutory waiting period on adoption, and that would get us in September, October time. So, for the, every Tuesday in May, I've boxed out here as yellow, just thinking, are there some of these dates that we could pick to work on the plan, realizing that you all have lives and other things that are going on? And I don't know how many days it's going to take. I wouldn't think we could, possibly we could do it one, but I think it's more likely we two, and it could take more. But I think that my goal would be to try to get the public information reading in by Fourth of July, and then we can work with the days before that. And I think it's best for the public, that they have perhaps three weeks. There's a three-week period, I think, before we can release the plan and say, "This is what we're going to information." So, at that, I've kind of given an overview. Questions, thoughts, comments in terms of where we're at, where we might go?
It's a simple question. First of all, excellent work. Thank you.
You haven't been ready yet.
I've been, I've been actually speeding through, but, I mean, I'm just, the whole, just the whole thought you've put into the layout. But, looking at May, and I'm, for one, I'm willing to work as many days as, as we need, but I see there's something marked off on the 16th, so that weekend is not a...
I have a conflict on 16th. So, I just, I've boxed out all the other dates, but that one had already been committed elsewhere, so I wasn't...
So, your regular meetings are, of course, the ninth and the, and the 23rd, is regular meetings for the month. Could do a special meeting on the second, and a special meeting on the 30th as needed. If, and if those, you know, if those dates don't work, we can...
I just know...
Work with you to figure that out?
Yeah, I, when we did the, the last POCD, we were, remember, Bill and Holly, we were, like, weekly. I'm not saying we have to do, but I mean, you know, it was, you know, we, we definitely did. I remember being upstairs eating pizza and, you know. So, my preference would be to start next week, if possible, do our regular meetings, that's three meetings, and then if we need to, we, you know, we could look at, you know, the end of the month. But I think if people read this and do, you know, we had to do a lot of work outside last time, too, but if people read, and I think you're right, Glenn, this is, it's similar enough. Last time, the plan was so different from the previous plan, I felt like we were starting at scratch, and...
They had a new language, it's clear, it's in red.
Yep, exactly. This is much, I mean, you remember, I mean, we were, you know, we had this, yeah. So, so that would be my preference, and whoever can, can, you know, be here for those meetings and participate. And I think, George, if I'm not mistaken, we do it where everyone can participate, alternates and regular members, if we do that.
Absolutely.
Right, right, right.
Yes, it's directing action.
Right, so, and, and people can make comments. I just want to be, yeah, clear for everyone.
Did you have collaborators on this, or are you the sole author of the text here?
We're being seen inside the front comfort post or whatever, you know, there's a million people that think we're the United States, that's all I meant. So, I, I put the plan together based on what was in the, I've had a chance to work on the last two plans, and I'm pretty familiar with the community overall, but I went through and evaluated all the issues that we had talked about, the feedback, and the survey, and the public meeting, got to a draft, asked George to look through it, because there were some areas where I had picked sort of bolder verbs, et cetera, just to get thoughts and reaction, and...
I placed a lot of sticky notes.
But I, I think overall, the reception was, you know, I think you're headed in the right direction, so we are hopeful that you will start to feel comfortable with the document fairly quickly. And again, our goal here is to change the wording, to reflect what your thoughts and desires are, because it's, it's your plan for Simsbury, not mine or yours.
And, and just so I understand, the 60-day period that you referred to, for, is that the time from the public meeting to the board's vote on it?
No, actually. Thanks for asking that question. The statutes changed on the POCD, so that when the commission says, "Okay, this is our proposed plan, if you will," and say, "We would schedule a public hearing," in the normal course of events, we might be able to publish a legal notice 14 days in advance, or 35 days in advance, and this requires a 65-day period, during which time the plan is referred to the board of selectmen for their advisory input, if they choose to do so, and also the revision of any of the considerations in the situation, depending on time.
Since the period of 65 days, we do no work on it. We put it out.
Yeah, I mean, there, work has happened, but then at that point, how, when you get to the public hearing, and you're bringing in a page of suggested ads, you know, that is, I use that instead of which, you know, make those ads such a good job. But the goal would be that, and the schedule shows here, that July 25th is our scheduled date for the commission to endorse the POCD, and schedule a public hearing and adoption for September 26th. So, I think if... I think given two weeks to the night, or the next week, I'm sorry, the second, I would suggest that in terms of reading, I think that if you could get through... I would suggest that in terms of reading, I think that if you could get through the conservation section of the plan to, I'd give up page 55, something like that, just have read that. And again, on the one hand, I want you to read up the work, on the other hand, everybody's busy with things going on in their lives. So I think the thing is to focus in on different parts in the section. So that gets us through the introduction of the plan, the conservation section, which then leads to development, infrastructure sections, and I would like to spend time on that. We've got that started. If it's so gripping, you have to read it all. You can tell me about it, too.
So we'd have the ability to zoom in on, except I'm out of town that week. To zoom in on the meeting?
We can figure that out.
Okay, because I have something I absolutely can't, I can't change, I'm out of town, so. And since it's the conservation section, next to that conservation, I'd like to be, definitely be a part of that discussion. Unless you'd like to skip that, and one of the times it can be, it's up to you how you want to.
Skip that.
I mean, not skip it, but I mean, do it, do it another week.
Rearrange.
You know, rearrange that section, it'd be easier to do that. I'm just, I'm just asking as a.
Be back offline.
So I think, I think in putting the plan together, they call it a plan of conservation and development. Over the years, I've felt that people appreciate the conservation development early, they need to build the foundation of the things in Simsbury that women want to try to protect or preserve before they're prepared to think flexibly about the future. If you're watching in the future, I'm talking about the things that are important, these are principles, et cetera.
Correct.
They're just a little easy. So I think I also, choosing wording and orientation of paragraphs, I kind of set it up that way. So I think, I think we can, virtual meeting is part of this.
Okay.
Any other thoughts or questions?
We need to make a vote to convene a special meeting?
No, we don't need to vote. But we do have to pick, we have to pick a place and time, like, I don't know that this room, that, yeah.
Maybe I'll work with the chairman, with the chairman, and then we'll get with everybody. I mean, obviously, I will have a conflict on the second 12, but we'll figure that out. Staff will fight and conquer as per.
Okay.
Conservation issue.
Okay.
We'll figure it out.
A few months ago, we had talked about the open space plan and how that impacted some of the, I'm going to forget the, PA.
PA 490.
Yes. Did we address that, or is that still some, when I say we, the collective we? Did you address that in the draft? Do we still need to talk about that?
We both weigh in on this. So we familiarize ourselves with the past planning efforts that the town has undertaken since the prior POCD, so that was very helpful to us, moving into our open space master plan. In recent years, the town had adopted the PA 490 program back in the 60s. PA 490 program essentially has three components, farm, forest, and open space. There were nine parcels in town that at one time had been getting the open space assessment. Over time, assessors have been working on this element of the program, and I believe at this time, all parcels have been moved out of the open space program into other program of parts of PA 490 that they were eligible for. George and I are undertaking a mapping exercise now to look at other parcels in town to say, could or should we adopt a PA 490 policy? And it's not, the mapping is supposed to be ready this week, so we'll have this information for you. But that might be something that we would then circle back on. So PA 490 is a tax assessment relief program that reduces, makes undeveloped plan less expensive to own. George and I have been discussing, for community like Simsbury, what should our strategy be? What are all the communities doing? So in a sense, it was a relief to have the parcels that had been getting it move into other elements of the program, because now it frees up our thinking on PA 490. So the strategy options in a sense could be stand pat, where we're at, we're good, or in fact, adopt some new policies. State law requires that it be recommended in the POCD, adopted by town meeting, board of selection, and then the program.
It's just not clear to us, we need the mapping and the data, so we might put you up with that. How many other parcels we're really going to identify? That would be appropriate for the purpose, which is, and the purpose is to identify them in open space, to delay development or, you know, potentially secure no development over time.
Nice.
I think we're struggling with whether it's a PA 490 plan for the open space side.
Even applicable, huh?
Is it worth doing?
Right.
I mean, again, not that many parcels left.
Right.
So it's worth it. Some of them, we might want to look for, you know. So we're going to come back, we're looking at, you know, minimum acreage above zoning, so we'll have some of the data for you, too.
Yeah, I think the picture is going to be worth a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we put, we parked that, if you will, we wanted to have that, but we parked it because we needed the GIS people to get the data for this document, that was done, finished next week, and now we're ready to move on to that. So yes, we're working on it.
Okay. And then we were talking about demographics and the census. Did those come through? Did we include those, or are we still waiting for the big old government?
The first is the operative date when it's supposed to be released, but they've done this to us before. I'd like to believe that it had three years to compile the data, and in decades past, it's taken up a year to 18 months. I don't know, well, actually, you know what happened, but you watch. Doc, the information has not been released yet. We have done the best we can with the data that's available. The census data, when it's released, will be a picture of April 1, 2020, what the circumstances were, and pretty much a complete count, hopefully, so they all participate. But the other tool we use is what's called the American Community Survey, which is a survey program by the Census Bureau, which estimates, or does estimate, based on a survey of one out of every 500 households around the country, and based on historic data, they interpolate. And so there's a margin of error around every number. So right now, we're bridging the gap. We've used the best data available today, which is the ACS, and depending on when the census comes out, we think the key thing for us to do is going to look at the PH demographics and how those have changed. Because we grew, you'll find in the census data, we grew by a thousand people over the last 10 years.
I know, and there's been so much change too since 2020.
Yeah, I was interested to know, as you are, what, what to, give out shows, but at this one time, we've got a month.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the plan is to put the PA 490 stuff in here, if applicable?
It's in here now.
Oh, it's in there now, oh.
It's in, but.
But it's not, okay, gotcha. All right.
We have it in you here.
Yep.
So page 52 and 53, this is in the chapter about the enhancement and enhance community on. And this is, the PA 490 is really a strategy, a guide to kind of undeveloped land that's pretty good long, but, so you can see that all the text on the left is red, branded, because it really wasn't addressed this way in the prior year. And the map on the right-hand side shows you as of today, based on the assessment of data from last week, which properties in town are receiving a farm or forest assessment, and some parcels are getting a little bit above. So that's the multiple.
And so we have it added, the pure open space.
Open space, yeah.
And the yellow highlight in the sidebar, as you see, has axes there. And this is, we're waiting for the final data from the assessor to add in there in time, that's right. So no pop quiz next week. Read your syllabus, yeah.
I know, it's like coming back.
Well, I'm looking forward to working through this with you, and I'm excited to see.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you. I like the notebook as opposed to this. Because this rips. Yeah. This is, yeah.
Nice cover page, Jim.
So George, we can talk, and then you'll send an email about time? Okay, perfect. All right. Bye, plan.
Thank you, Glenn. In terms of correspondence, we've gotten an email, Joe Hollis, regarding the DEI sponsorship of the housing form on that day, and all are invited. It will be facilitated by a DEI professional on housing, I understand? And you're invited? This is what I know.
Is the town sponsoring this, George?
Well, DEI is a, is a committee of the board of selection. So in that sense, they are.
Okay.
Understand that dinner with is included.
No jokes.
I know. It's junior high school, watch.
Tater tots.
Tater tots. I love tater tots.
You know what, that would be okay. Tots and cookies.
They come back, they come back to.
You have to have a tray, go up to the human, bust your own table. George, how is this, how is this different from the event at the library last fall?
So I think it is a, if this is the, they had always planned three in a series, actually, as it was explained to me from both Cheryl and Nicole, that one was a, they were supposed to have builds upon each other. I'm not exactly sure what the facilitation is going to be, but it is supposed to be the third in of the three events. I had not been involved in the plan.
Right.
Happy to, but.
Yeah, he did send that out.
Yep.
Yep. So, all right. But thank you for that explanation.
Population and population here back in the.
So that is it for tonight, right? All right.
Thank you, everybody, for meeting.
Big drop.
Oh, excellent.
Yeah, I like it, preferred.
Do you?
Yeah.
Prefer, rather than seven?
Yeah.
You know, from my history.
I don't, I'm going to find out, though.
You let me know.
Do.
Oh, I know, you've got, so, all right, well, without objection, I adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Very good.